Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 12, 2024, meeting of the Board of Education for Arlington Heights School District 25. And before we begin, we have a lot to celebrate this evening, but I want to share with everyone that's here and watching online that our meetings are when the school board conducts its business and they are open to the public. Because we are an elected governmental body, we can only take action by majority vote here in a public meeting like this one. We welcome everyone to listen and observe, and we have a community input section on the agenda if you have questions or comments on the business of the board. So we are now going to reconvene after returning from closed session, and I call the meeting to order. And Ms. O'Brien, will you please call the roll?
Olenicek.
Here.
Nierman.
Here.
Jogi.
Here.
Scott Bellato.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Sir Niglia.
Here.
Thank you, and please stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as I said at the start, we have so much to celebrate here in District 25, and tonight is no exception. We have several sports recognitions, and we're going to start with congratulations to the South Middle School Golf Club member Stanley Powers, who qualified. Go ahead, let's give it up for Stanley. And, yeah, please, absolutely.
Hi. This is the Western Voice here today. We're going to talk about some of the South Golf Club. My thoughts tonight are for our regional tryout.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Testing. It's on.
Okay. After a tough competition, we were only able to have two students represent us at regionals this year, so Eddie Colbertson and Stanley Powers. It was a great opportunity for them to compete against other golfers in the local area, and for the second year in a row, Stanley advanced to the state tournament and finished with an 83, which is awesome. Stanley will continue his golfing journey in high school next year. We are so excited to have such an excellent golfer represent us this year at the state tournament, so thank you, Stanley, and good job.
Stanley, I played some scrambles. I wouldn't mind if you joined me in some of those. Congratulations to you, it's quite an honor. We have a bag, keep all your balls, maybe head covers. Congratulations to you, really proud of you. Congratulations.
Good job, Stanley.
Thanks, we're going to bring out the coaches for Thomas and South student athletes who participated in the state cross country. So let's bring over the coaches.
Alphabetically, you go first.
Yeah. Do you want me to stand this time? Right here? All right.
All right, so first I want to start out with giving thanks. So I want to say thank you to the parents first. Thank you for all the shoes and the spikes and the money that you spend on our athletes, all the driving them around, to all the practices and meets, and overall, the support that you give to all of our athletes. So thank you, parents. Round of applause. I also want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to recognize our athletes and all of their accomplishments today, so thank you to the board. Thank you to our building administrators as well for all of their support, and all of our coaches, Kim Radzak and Tim Evans at South, and then all of the coaches at Thomas as well for hosting sectionals this year. So round of applause for all of them. And then lastly, I want to thank all of our athletes for making this such a great, special season. You know, ex-C cross country takes a lot of passion, persistence, and hard work. They come to practice every day with smiles on their face, ready to work hard and hurt, really to do for fun and for sport what most other sports do for punishment, right? They push themselves hard, chasing seconds and trying to be better and faster than they were the last time, and still they find time to have fun. You know, a coach once told me, "Racing is easy, but it's the training that's hard." And we're going to kind of do a season recap, play this video real quick, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the ending of the season and kind of highlight our athletes real quick. And it was an awesome season because of all the hard work they put in. There were a lot of PRs, you know, you don't run your best every race, but overall, from the beginning to the end of the season, every single athlete on the team got better, even if it was just a little bit. And you know, that's really what cross country is about, is improving and getting better time after time. At sectionals, our boys and girls both placed third, and arguably, especially on the girl's side, the toughest sectional in the state, where the teams that got second and first in the sectional went in and got first and second at the state meet. At state, our boys placed 19th and our girls placed eighth, so it was overall a really good day for Arlington Heights. And I do want to highlight our one all-state runner, McKenna Carroll, who placed 19th with a time of 12 minutes, 16.33 seconds. And it always amazes me how nice and supportive runners as a whole are. You have these kids who are so fiercely, fiercely competitive. They're probably some of the most competitive kids you'll ever meet. And when they toe up to the line, you know, they're willing to hurt and suffer through a race to win, and you know, when the gun goes off, yet they manage to be so supportive, kind, and compassionate, especially when they've crossed the finish line. You see them shaking hands and congratulating everyone else, no matter how well they did. These kids that we're recognizing today show all of these qualities that I've talked about. They've shown it to us time and time again throughout the season, and so one more time, I just want to congratulate them. So the athletes that made it downstate for South this year, on the girl's side, we have Tess Bauer, Bella Caldera, McKenna Carroll, Audrey Childs, Aaron Collins, Loretta Cox, Gretchen Heckard, Kaylee Leoni, Ellie Mopin, and Lilly Newman. And on the boy's side, we had Eddie Furman, Brennan Kaiser, Matias Mendoza, Cameron Niemec, Samuel Pignato, Zach Samuels, Jimmy Small, Ethan Tang, Will Thanopoulos, and Rodrigo Zapata Solano. And a special shout out to our team managers, Oliver Nierman and Brianna Clokenge.
Is Stanley still here? Stanley, I'm going to do a mulligan. Do you know what that is? I'd like to do a mulligan. Could I get you up here one more time? We didn't do an official photo opportunity. Could you bring your coach with you as well? Yeah. We didn't do a photo op. I want to do a mulligan. I do a couple of those on a course. Couple. You guys in the middle. We're going to do a photo op. Is Stanley still here? Stanley, I'm going to do a mulligan. Do you know what that is? I'd like to do a mulligan. Could I get you up here one more time? We didn't do an official photo opportunity. Could you bring your coach with you as well? Yeah. We didn't do a photo op. I want to do a mulligan. I do a couple of those on a course. Couple. You guys in the middle. We're going to do a photo op. Well, everyone, we have one more recognition, and I'm going to turn that to Dr. Kade to handle that one.
Greg, so I wanted to take a moment to recognize all of you as school board members. This is the moment when we recognize on Friday officially is School Board Members' Day, so I wanted to give you something now and then something during my portion, during the superintendent report a little bit later. But what I wanted to say is thank you for your commitment, your dedication, giving up of yourselves many nights of the year with compensation times 100 still equals zero, because the compensation is $0, but it's all from the heart. This year's School Board Members' Day theme is give them the recognition they have earned.
PR after PR every race and you know they peaked at the right time. Um, a lot of them PR'd and you know, we had really tough competition. Uh, they won their sectional by two points. Um, so just showing you that every single runner counts. You know, the week before we were tied and we won the tiebreaker at the meet before sectionals and at the state meet it was no different. The girls all had their best race and it showed and the results were another victory, two points ahead of second place for back-to-back state titles. And in those state titles, we had four girls who are all-state. Uh, we had Lucy Blandford, uh, who isn't here, she was all-state. Uh, Madeline Surr was all-state. Clara Vincent was all-state and um, I believe our first-ever state champion for the district, Adelaide Gala was our state champion for the entire state of Illinois for Class 4A. So congratulations to all of you.
Okay, I think, I think I just want to add that the kids here tonight from both South and Thomas represent enormous cross-country programs. South had 160 runners and Thomas had 200 runners on our regular season cross-country teams. So it's a huge honor to be in this elite group here, but you guys have done so in an incredible way. You've represented our respective programs, you've represented our middle schools, South and Thomas, District 25, and the community of Arlington Heights. And I, it's kind of a joke, but other coaches have asked us what's in the water in this area because we really have had some pretty tremendous success in the cross-country areas in the last couple of years. Um, also you guys have led with example, with tremendous hard work, charisma, great sportsmanship, and I think I can speak for the parents, the grandparents, the super-fans out there, your coaches, that it has been an absolute honor and it's been so much fun. We, we miss it. Um, but it has been so fun to see you guys experience the amount of success, um, but really to see the way in which you've represented all of these groups that I've just mentioned. So we're so proud of you.
All right, so I'm just going to introduce the teams. Uh, so some athletes for the boys that are not present are Ryan Pham, Josh Morrison, Lucas Siena, Landon Rice, and Chase Larson. And the boys that are present are, and you guys could step forward when I call your name, Austin Ryder, Matt Cole, Billy Dugan, Ewan Smith, and all-state runner Kyle Dugan. And for the girls not here tonight are Eliana Yay and Madeline Reese and all-state runner Lucy Blandford. And present are Veda Ashman, McConna Fox, all-state runner Clara Vincent, all-state runner Madeline Surr, state champion Adelaide Gala, Megan Fritchy, and Lauren Cole. Great job everyone, great season. Hope to see you here back again next year.
All right, if you guys could stay here for just a moment and do me the honors of helping. I'm glad that the trophy was able to make it to the event, but we didn't want each of you to leave without a memento. So we are going to fill your bag with a look-alike. It's not the real deal, but it's a mini-trophy. So we want to fill each of your bags with a trophy. Congratulations to all of you. Did you get one? Do you want to set that one down?
Yeah.
Yeah. Awesome. Let's get a team photo with their trophies. All right, stay there. We don't want your coaches to feel left out of this party. Coaches, come on up. Congratulations to you guys. Thank you for your dedication. One more. Congratulations. Now get up here for one last photo with your team. We'll step out of the way. If you could tell me where that water is, I'd like to drink some because I've not found it. Girls, congratulations, you represented us really well along with all the other runners. Thank you. Mr. Kadel, I do have one for you as well. I don't want you to feel left out. So as we are rearranging the room, this is the perfect transition moment for all of you to decide if you want to stay for the rest of the board meeting or if you want to use this opportunity to run out of here. Thank you all for coming tonight.
that one.
Greg, so I wanted to take a moment to recognize all of you as school board members. This is the moment when we recognize on Friday officially is School Board Members' Day. So I wanted to give you something now and then something during my portion, during the superintendent report a little bit later. Uh, but what I wanted to say is thank you for your commitment, your dedication, giving up of yourselves many nights of the year with compensation times 100 still equals zero because the compensation is $0, but it's all from the heart. This year's School Board Members' Day theme is give them the recognition they have earned. All of you have earned the recognition of being great school board members. We have a certificate that I'm going to give you right now, just give me a moment, uh, from the Illinois Association of School Boards and it's signed by myself. It's also signed by our ATA president, Allison Berg, and it's on behalf of acknowledging your efforts on behalf of the district. So congratulations, give me one moment, I'm going to go grab them. So which was you? I had to prep saying O'Leary chick properly. And, oh, did you want one? Yeah. Now, I know it's a middle school thing to leave people out, but I don't want to do that. So, I know you saw the team just get some awards. You're the school board for the state champion girls cross-country team. So I'm filling your bag too. Congratulations to all of you. If you happen to find the water that they're drinking, let me know. But I also wanted you guys to be able to remember this moment as well. So congratulations to you guys as well. Yep. Did everyone get one over there? And Gina, I know you're watching online, we will get you one. And the last thing I want to mention is inside of your certificate is also a letter from State Senator Mark Walker. He wanted to recognize this day for you guys as well. So thank you and I will return to this moment later in the evening.
Well, thank you, Dr. K, and quite an evening of celebrations and thank you for all that. All right, so we're going to move on to our board communication. So first I want to ask our board members, do we have any updates from around the district that you want to share this evening?
Sure. I would just like to thank all the staff for your parent-teacher conference smiles and attitudes and long day I attended at South for my kids and it just is really special and amazing to see all the work that goes in. So thank you, staff, and thank you for all the parents who took time out of your days to come. I know it's important. And thank you for the kids who got up early to go to their own conferences. That's impressive.
Thank you, Liz. And Anisha, you got?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Parent-teacher conferences was really good. It was great to be there in our parent hats and see so many students sitting at the middle school tables. I was at the middle school too. Um, I also wanted to share that the board was invited to a City of Support event earlier. When was that? That was November 7th, um, early this last week. So it was a great event. I was able to go. I didn't think I was going to make it, but I happened to be in the Schaumburg area, so I dropped by. Um, and City of Support is an organization that has a mission to create a dynamic community both online and in-person that supports all families navigating the needs of child, of their child and therapy regardless of their diagnosis. It was really fascinating for me as a board member to attend because there were organizations and support groups and therapists and speech pathologists from different areas in this one space, really networking for the benefit of the kids and the community. Uh, so a huge shout-out to Beth Dieter, who is the founder of Support and grateful that the board was invited to go. So that was a really nice event to attend. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Anisha. Any others? Okay. All right, then we'll go to, uh, to our EdRed report and Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So after a couple of months of nothing to report, I have a lot to report tonight. Uh, on October 18th, I attended the annual EdRed kickoff luncheon and Dr. K and Dr. Jogi were there as well. Keynote speaker was Rebecca Von der Lack Navarro. She's the Vice President of Education Policy and Research at the Latino Policy Forum. Um, and she gave a keynote on the importance of meeting the needs of multilingual learners in both English and also in their home language. It was a really interesting topic. Um, then last week on November 8th, uh, the monthly EdRed meeting took place. This time it was via Zoom only. Uh, guest speakers were Amy Dickerson and Caitlin Atlas from Franzick Partners Law Firm. Uh, the two of them provided significant updates about Title IX. Uh, the new regulations for Title IX were effective in August of 2024 regarding districts' response to sex-based discrimination and harassment. Um, the new rules are currently in effect. Uh, they, they stress that a lot of people have questions, particularly in election year because every four to eight years we have significant changes in federal government and policies might change a result as a result, but for the time being Title IX is in place as the August 2024, uh, updates went into effect. That is currently the case and will be moving forward until we hear otherwise. Um, all districts as part of this are required to appoint a Title IX coordinator and make sure that that person is known to staff and identified in policies. For District 25, that person is Kendra Perry and um, we are meeting those requirements as a district, which is good to know. Um, we as a board have also adopted a compliant Title IX policy as part of our board policies. Um, information that they shared is also that under the current policies that any school personnel, um, regardless of their title, regardless of their role in the district, receive any kind of resport, excuse me, report of sex-based discrimination, that triggers immediate and automatic obligation for the district to respond regardless of whether the employee shares that information with any other personnel or administration within the district. So that's just an important detail that all districts are, uh, being asked to make sure their employees understand. Um, there are already policies in place and have been for several years that all district employees receive annual training on Title IX. So that is also something that District 25 is in compliance with, but just a, a good reminder to have regarding that important federal law. Um, moving on to legislative updates, um, all legislators in the EdRed conglomerates were, that were up for reelection, retain their seats. Um, many districts in the area, in the surrounding area passed successful referendums, including my district of employment, which I was excited about. Um, annual initiatives shared by Bridget Peach of EdRed, uh, the, the main focuses of the organization this year are upholding state paid leave law in response to the ordinance in Cook County and they're trying to make sure that the original intent is upheld, that it should not include schools and par district, excuse me, and park districts in the definition of employer based on that law. Um, focusing on dual credit equality, which doesn't impact District 25 directly not being a high school district, but it will impact District 25 alums. And then de-prioritizing, excuse me, de-prioritizing schools as polling places within Cook County, which I've mentioned in the past, um, and they are trying to engage with the Cook County Clerk's Office to, uh, move forward on, uh, discussions about that. Bridget also shared in the upcoming veto session, which actually began today through the 14th and then will continue November 19th through 21st, uh, they're, they're expecting a significant amount of legislative action during that time. Um, multiple bills were approved for consideration and assigned to committees. Um, and based on recent, uh, public statements by Governor Pritzker, it is likely that certain pieces of current federal law will be adopted and codified, codified at a state level by the state of Illinois. So that's kind of a lot to share at once, um, but I know that, uh, Dr. K was also in that Zoom session and Stacy, I, I couldn't remember if I saw you in the list of attendees or not. So, uh, Dr. K, if there's anything that I did not share that you think is important, please, uh, feel free to add that.
I was checking all the pages off as you went, so I have nothing else to add. Thank you for being so thorough in your report.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Yeah, again, thank you, that's quite a bit, so thanks for walking us through all of it. All right, uh, next is our IASB report and Anisha, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, we are set to go to ISB, to the triple-I conference. It's going to happen November 22nd to 24th this time. Um, the majority of us are going, so it's going to be great. To be there, we've been preparing as far as we're presenting at the conference, so we have been putting in a lot of good time tomorrow. Please wish us luck. We're doing a mock rehearsal and we're going to sound great when we do it, so we're ready for all the folks out. Uh, the, as far as our panel, you know, it's all about sharing our success. It's called Share the Success Panel and we've been invited from District 25 to present, so we're honored to do that and we've put in a lot of hard work, not just the presenters, but Adam and Lana and all the backend work that goes into triple-I is really great. So, um, I'm, I'm grateful to everybody for setting us up for success as we go to the triple-I conference. Uh, we're also ready for the delegate assembly and today we'll talk more about that a little bit later to Dr. K. We'll talk about that a little bit later. And then as far as, uh, board members, you know, there's a handy-dandy app that the conference has, um, download it to your phones, it's really helpful, kind of check off all the sessions you want to go to. It, it kind of downloads it to your calendar and there's lots of great sessions, including ours. Ours will be the best, but you know, so come to our session for sure. And then, um, when we come back in December, it'd be great to hear about the different sessions that you went to, so we can all share and learn from each other and divide and conquer across the different sessions that are happening. There's also a Friday pre-conference session that's going to happen. Uh, I know I'm, I'm attending a finance one, so I'll, I'll have a lot of things to share with Stacy because every time Stacy talks, I learn so much from Stacy and so I'm, I'm going to go and learn a little bit more because finance is such an important topic and safety, uh, there's a session on safety and school safety as well and, and many others that are happening on Friday, the pre-conference. Um, so we're looking forward to go to the conference, learn a lot and come back in December and share. Um, that's about it for triple-I.
Thanks. Just for, for the record, our presenters are, right, yourself, Dr. K and Kevin Michael. So thank you for all the extra hard work you guys have been putting in. And that session is when?
It's at 3:00 PM on Saturday. Yeah.
All right. We look forward to that, so thank you again. All right, uh, next up is our NSSEO report and Liz.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things, um, you'll notice in the, in board docs, I have a couple of documents linked for you. Kirk is experiencing the need for some mechanical upgrades. Um, and you can take a look through the bid packages, any questions you have, you can either relay them to me or to Stacy, I can shoot you right over to Gavin. Um, I've spoken with, um, Mr. K about it and we are thinking that overall this is maintenance that needs to be done and at the December meeting I will be voting yes on behalf of our board. If you have any questions or concerns about that, by all means, let me know, we can talk about it. Like I said, I've linked everything here for you. NSSEO is, um, kind of changing their protocols and trying to become more transparent with everything they do, including their financial operations. So as time goes on, you will see that I share more of these documents with you. Um, a lot of them look a lot like ours do, some look different. I can help to answer any questions. Stacy's probably better to help with that, but I'm, I'm eager to help let you know what's going on with NSSEO. Um, also there is a smell issue at Minor. I have to give a nice shout-out to Ryan Schultz. He said that he's been communicating with them almost daily, so thank you to Ryan, wherever you may be, um, for all the work you do there. Um, another thing that, that Meg Schnorr, their superintendent, recommended is that if any of us would like to tour any of the NSSEO schools, at any point, you are welcome to contact her to take a tour. She recommends doing so during the school day. Um, the environments that they have at their schools are much different than ours and it might be helpful for us to have a lens of what's going on there on a given day. So you can either email Meg directly, you can email me and I can direct you to her, but we're all encouraged to visit. Um, we also have the strategic plan update. So Stacy Malik, Diane Kafka and myself will be meeting on December 3rd and 10th as part of the core group to determine their strategic plan. Um, our goal will be to create an action plan and a strategic dashboard moving forward. So you can expect to hear more updates from me about that as time goes on. Um, and finally, some fun stuff. Um, Timber Ridge is hosting a holiday store for their students. Um, it's a therapeutic day school and they provide specialized social emotional support for kids K through 8. They're setting up a store for the kids to come and shop for their families. So if anyone has any donations, I'll be happy to pick those up for you and drop them off. It'll be pretty fun. I would love to be there at that shopping night, that would be awesome. Um, there's also an E-Works electronic pop-up store that is a donation program for the school and that will be Saturday, November 16th from 9:00 to 1:00 in the Timber Ridge gym. So it's laptops and Keurig's and pretty much anything you can imagine that's been refurbished and the money will go back to Timber Ridge. So like I said, any questions you have, send them my way, but otherwise that is it for me.
Thank you, Liz. I, I do have a question because, um, like as you said, the protocols are changing and we're seeing, going to see more of the Kirk example. So, uh, to you or Stacy or Dr. K, so when we see that, um, the funding for those projects comes out of what we're already contributing, right? Like we're doing our due diligence to, to give feedback to Liz, but this isn't represent like, um, we're, there's an additional portion we're paying out of this for this mechanical work. Is that correct?
Um, so actually there is, there is, um, they start, NSSEO started, um, as part of our total budget, I'll say, uh, they, I want to say levy, it's not a levy. Um, they've added on what they call a capital contribution. Um, and it's, um, prorated the same way all of the other funding formulas work with them where a portion of the distribution is fixed for all member districts, a portion is based on each district's percent of total revenues and then, um, the other portions based on usage of NSSEO services. Um, so we represent 9% of the total, I believe. Um, so I can tell you what our capital contribution is. But we will, we've established actually that part of this transparency piece is NSSEO having a similar to what we, to what most of us other districts have in terms of a five-year or long-term facility plan, so that something like this doesn't pop up all of a sudden and we need to fund it right away. Um, where we'll make as part of our regular budget now a contribution that they'll hold in a capital projects fund like we're doing, so that in the future as things come up, hopefully they'll be building reserves to cover those costs.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Okay. Go ahead, please, Liz.
And I'd just like to, to thank Stacy because I know you've been a real leader in this whole process and quite a mentor to a lot of people at NSSEO and myself with this financial system. Thank you for the extra hours and time that you've put in, it's appreciated.
All right, well, thank you for all of those reports, quite a bit this month. And so now is our community input section of the agenda. So if a member of the public wishes to address any item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you please complete one of the blue forms that are available on the table just outside the room here and we, and hand the card to Lana O'Brien. So, um, and we ask that you please note on the card if you would like to speak now, which is our first input section of the agenda or later, should we have a second community input section. So Lana, do we have any blue slips this evening? Okay. So seeing none, we might have more later, but we'll continue on to our communications from our district partners. And our first one is from Amanda Von Solly for the PTA, but we are going to deliver that.
I would love to report out for Amanda Von Solly.
Thank you, Dr. K.
On behalf of the Arlington Knights Council of PTAs, thanks to all the parents and teachers who joined the PTA this school year. If you have not yet joined, please visit your school's website to do so. Recently, myself and representatives from our nine PTAs and school principals attended the Northwest Cook Region PTA Annual Meeting and Recognition. I am proud to share that Arlington Knights Council of PTAs I am proud to share that Arlington Heights Council of PTAs' schools won the following awards and recognitions. For Innovative Programming, Ivy Hill Eagles PTA. For Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, the Dryden Dolphins PTA. And the Patton Panthers PTA. The Hey, That's Cool Award went to the Greenbrier Gators PTA. And the following membership awards for Fall Membership 2425. In the Yellow Ribbon Category, an increase of 10 members from last year, Patton, Windsor, and Greenbrier. In the Red Ribbon Category, an increase of 26 to 49 members, Ivy Hill. And the Blue Ribbon, an increase of 50-plus members from last year, with probably a couple hundred extra students in enrollment, the Thomas Timberwolves PTA. And on track for the Bronze Membership Award for this school year, Thomas, Dryden, Windsor, Olive, and Patton. Some highlights from our school PTAs in the past couple of months. At Ivy Hill, they've held their first fund run since 2019, and it was a very successful event and fundraiser. It also hosted their family movie night and sponsored a cultural arts assembly at school. At Patton, they hosted a grade-level family night for the first time in the first months of school. They also had their successful and fun Patton Tailgate fundraiser for parents. Greenbrier hosted their movie night, complete with a sensory-friendly area and Gator Bash Dance Glow Party. Westgate hosted their Fall Fest Walk to School Event and a movie night, and started their art club as well. Olive sponsored a coat drive and hosted a family bingo night. Thomas hosted a Fall Fest for all grades after school, the Friday before Halloween. South hosted a 6th and 7th Grade Activity Night, and was happy to feed the teachers at parent-teacher conferences and stocked their teacher's lounge full of goodies. Windsor hosted a family movie night, a very successful bingo night fundraiser, and sponsored a Halloween Costume Give Back Program. And last but not least, Dryden is excited to host their new Winter Wonderland Event next month. Our Arlington Heights Council of PTAs is currently looking to fill the following roles from any PTA in the district. Listen carefully. President-elect, Second Vice President, anyone who has served on an executive council at any district school and is currently a PTA member is eligible. Please contact me, Amanda Bonsali, at a h c p t a twenty-five at gmail dot com if there is any interest. Doing it now would be great. And that is all from Amanda Bonsali.
Thank you for that report on her behalf, and I think we all know, we heard those highlights, but there's so much going on. I know I attended a glow party at Patton, and I heard about them packing the teacher's lounge with treats and goodies, so, and I think you guys know at your schools too. So, just appreciate all that they do to, to make our schools and our district just a wonderful community. All right, next is ABC25. Gina was unable to be here. Did we get a report?
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll move. Well, we can go out of order. So, Allison, if we could welcome you up to the microphone, and we'll, all right. Welcome, and.
Is it on now? Yes? Okay. Now, I'm so loud without it. I don't really need it, but I get the, I get how it works. Okay, good evening. I would first like to say, happy board member appreciation. We are grateful to work with amazing board members and administration here in District 25. We have been lucky to have meaningful conversations and positive collaboration, both with the school board and administration, and we look forward to continuing this positive relationship as we continue to move forward. ATA does not have awesome awards for you. We gave you mugs. However, I would like to say that the mugs are from Coco and Blue by a local artist who hand-painted them, and it is like all of Arlington Heights on the mug. So, they're pretty cool. They're not just any mugs, but they're not plaques. So, enjoy, and thank you for serving on our board. We appreciate all that you do for us, so thank you. Okay, so there are lots of things going on around in the district, and again, shout out to PTA. The teachers are also super grateful for the PTA and all that they do for our schools and our students, and support the teachers as well. We also appreciate that. Some other things going on. Monday was Veterans Day, so every school in the district had some special Veterans Day activities going on. I'm just going to highlight a couple of pictures from Windsor and Greenbrier celebrations, but schools made cards, wrote letters, sang in assemblies, hosted breakfast, and we had parades to honor veterans in our school community. It was a great day for everybody. Here are some of the students at Windsor and the breakfast at Windsor School, and here are some photos from Greenbrier as well, with their students and assembly. Pretty cool stuff. The Prism, the Prism Club at South has been hard at work this year. This is a picture of their latest bulletin board, which is a work in progress. South students participated in their variety show. There's a few pictures from their event. There they are. The South speech team was also very busy at a recent speech event. Over 300 students competed from nine different schools in over 150 events, with an additional 348 attendance, audience attendees. South is now one of the biggest speech teams in the IESA Area 3, with 35 team members that participated in 32 events in their third year. And this is South's second time hosting the state area contest, and there's a few pictures from that event. I like those. Students in action. I like it. Second graders at Windsor School enjoyed some hands-on learning, dissecting owl pellets, always a favorite. And finally, second graders had a lot of fun today, as a matter of fact, celebrating the 50th Day of School. This is actually a first in my teaching career that I've seen the 50th Day celebrated. Wait, it gets better. Here are their teachers dressed up in the 50s. I guess like kindergarten and first grade make a big deal out of 100 days, so the second graders decided they were going to celebrate 50th Day today. So, it was a fun, it was really fun to see at school today. So, that's what's going around in this, around in the district. Thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to share, and I'll be back next month with more stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Allison, for all those updates. Thank you. We appreciate that window into the schools that you give us. Thank you. And Dr. K, we have an update?
Yes, so on behalf of Gina, who wanted to share an update from ABC25, a big thank you to all of those that submitted grants this year. They received a total of 38 grants totaling over $50,000 in innovative, creative ideas that are driven from our teachers and staff continuing to deliver the outstanding education our children receive. ABC25 representatives are busy reading and grading the grants. Additionally, ABC25 is busy working on membership drive, which can help schools earn an additional $2,500. And finally, they are busy preparing for this year's Fun Fest, so stay tuned. Thank you, ABC25. I know many teachers are waiting to see if they got a grant approved, so thank you.
All right, and thank you, Dr. K, and Gina. That's all of our communications from district partners, so we'll get down to some of the nuts and bolts of our meeting with the consent agenda, and this is an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, Personnel Report. B, Invoices. C, Treasurer's Report. D, Regular Enclosed Session Meeting Minutes of October 8, 2024.
Thank you, Kevin. A second, please. Thank you, Anisha. And Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Neerman?
Yes.
Jogi? Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Olnychak?
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries 6-0, and we'll now go to our student learning portion of the agenda. And this is an information item on the Assessment and Illinois School Report Card. So, we'll welcome Dr. Fitzpatrick and Manu Churnick to the microphone, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us. All right, so tonight, we will be reviewing District 25's performance on last spring's Illinois Science Assessment, or the ISA, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, or the IAR, and the NWEA MAP Assessment. Along with sharing assessment data, we will also be highlighting specific actions the district departments and buildings are taking to support student growth and achievement this year. I'll now turn it over to our assessment coordinator, Amanda Churnick.
Good evening. So, we're going to begin by reviewing our students' achievement on the ISA, or the Illinois Science Assessment. This is an assessment administered to all 5th and 8th graders in the state. So, here we see how District 25 and Illinois students performed overall on the ISA during the last four school years. District 25 students are displayed on the top of the graph, while all Illinois students are displayed on the bottom. The light and dark green bars represent the percentage of students meeting or exceeding the proficiency benchmark in science. Proficiency is the percent of students who meet the performance level set by the state of Illinois. Per science, the level is a scale score of 799 out of 900. As you can see, District 25 proficiency in science continues to outperform the state, with our district achieving an 84% proficient from last spring, while the state achieved a 53% proficient. District 25 science proficiency last spring increased nine percentage points over the spring prior. This next slide shows us the overall proficiency by District 25 schools on the ISA. District 25 schools demonstrated greater than 75% overall proficiency in science last spring. This year, middle school science teachers are in the action planning year of the program review process, in which they establish belief statements, review data, evaluate resources, and develop a professional learning plan. We now see that District 25 students continue to outperform District 214 Center Districts in meeting the performance level over the past three years. Moving on to the math portion of the IAR assessment administered to all 3rd through 8th graders in Illinois. This slide shows us how District 25 and Illinois students performed overall on the math portion of the IAR over five school years. Again, District 25 students are displayed on the top, and Illinois students on the bottom. The proficiency benchmark for this assessment is a scale score of 750 out of 850. District 25 proficiency in math continues to outperform the state, with our district achieving a 51% proficient, while the state achieved a 28% proficient. Further, our math proficiency increased by four percentage points over last year. So, let's look at our student cohorts' IAR math proficiency levels over time. On this graph, each cohort represents, excuse me, the same group of students over four school years. For example, the 8th grade student cohort grouping on the far right captures last year's 8th graders where they were as 5th graders, depicted with the yellow bar, as well as as 6th graders, 7th, and 8th graders, depicted with a light blue bar. So, cohort performance over time continues to be inconsistent in math. Important to note, our 6th graders shift from 60 instructional minutes of math in 5th grade to 40 minutes in 6th grade. The current 6th grade math curriculum provides less visual representations and conceptual instruction than the 5th grade resource. Our middle school math teachers are in the action planning phase of the program review process, in which they will pilot new curricula this winter. We now see that District 25 trends above District 214 Center Districts in meeting the performance level in math over the past three years. Let's shift from student achievement to student growth. Some of the following slides will be referencing ECR's growth metrics. To review, ECR's growth model uses individual student performance on standardized assessments taken the year prior in light of District 25 norms to create a projection of student achievement for the upcoming year. After students take an assessment, ECR generates a growth score for each student that aligns to how closely a student reaches their projection. Growth scores are then combined across different student groups, and that information is color-coded to help with interpretation. One way to think about ECR's growth model is to consider a child's annual checkup, in which they may be a little taller or a little shorter than where they were projected to be from the year prior. These variations in growth would still fall within an expected range, as human growth is not perfectly predictable. As for the color coding, blue means the student group experienced higher-than-expected growth, green means the student group experienced expected growth, and yellow and red means the student group experienced lower-than-expected growth. So, as a reminder, growth is different from proficiency. It's possible for students to easily meet the proficiency benchmark but make lower-than-expected growth for the year. Conversely, some students could not meet the proficiency benchmark but demonstrate strong growth over the school year. Both are important. We want our students to be proficient, and we also want our students to grow. So, this next slide shows our math IAR data compiled by District 25 schools, which includes the student count, the percentages of students meeting the proficiency benchmark, and growth information. We see that all District 25 schools grew as expected, except Greenbrier, Ivy Hill, and South, which experienced higher-than-expected growth. Here we see that while all student groups grew as expected in math last spring, 20% of students designated as multilingual, or ML, met the proficiency benchmark, while 54% of students not designated as ML met the benchmark. Again, this is the achievement gap. We want to also compare growth between these student groups to ensure there's not a growth gap. Between, I'm sorry, a growth gap between them, so that the achievement gap does not continue to widen. So, in this case, our ML students are growing at a higher-than-expected rate, which will help close the achievement gap. New to District 25 this year, each school has an instructional coach to support teachers with a focus on data-driven instructional strategies aligned with best practices in our curriculum to support student learning. Moving on to the ELA portion of the IAR assessment, again administered to all 3rd through 8th graders in Illinois. Here we see that District 25 proficiency in ELA continues to outperform the state, with our district achieving 63% proficient, while the state achieved 41% proficient. Further, our ELA proficiency increased by seven percentage points over last year. Overall, ELA proficiency by cohort grew over the year prior, except for our 6th graders. As a point of celebration, last spring's 4th graders' written expression proficiency grew from approximately 32% in 3rd grade to approximately 68% in 4th grade. Also important to note, our 6th graders shift from an average of 130 instructional minutes of literacy per day in 5th grade to 80 instructional minutes of ELA in 6th grade. District 25 continues to outperform the state in all of their 214 Center Districts in meeting performance levels in ELA. Also in ELA, more than half of our buildings experienced higher-than-expected growth on the IAR. In ELA, many student groups grew higher-than-expected, including our ML students. Focus is needed to accelerate growth for our students with IEPs who experienced less growth than students without IEPs. We're going to transition to the math portion of the spring MAP Assessment administered to all K through 8th graders in the district. Quick aside, the IAR and MAP math tests differ in that the IAR asks students to construct responses, including writing an equation with the solution, explaining how to use a tool like a number line to find an answer, and/or explaining how the student solved a problem, whereas the MAP requires students to provide answers in multiple-choice formats. Both assessments are aligned to the Illinois learning standards. In math, all schools grew as expected, except Ivy Hill and Patton, which experienced higher-than-expected growth. In math, all student groups grew as expected. 2023, 2024 was the implementation year of Math and Focus 2020. Teachers learned the curriculum's routines, structures, and pacing last year, and will be even more skilled at delivering content this year. Using MAPS RIT score to equate student proficiency, cohort performance over time has been inconsistent in math. As part of the program review over the next two years, middle school math teachers will participate in professional learning focused on high-impact teaching strategies. They will also analyze resources like personalized learning platforms to complement student understanding. Finally, let's review the reading portion of the spring MAP Assessment administered to all. to all K through 8th graders in the district. Noteworthy, the IAR and MAP literacy tests differ, in that the IAR asks students to write a research essay in addition to a literary analysis or a narrative essay, whereas the MAP does not have a writing component. So in reading, all schools grew as expected. Elementary teachers are currently in the professional learning year of the Literacy Program Review Process, during which they receive training on our new comprehensive literacy curriculum called Intereading, which will be implemented district-wide next year. In reading, all student groups grew as expected. Also during this professional learning year, elementary teachers are engaging in a book study and professional learning using the foundational text, teaching reading across the day to implement research-based reading structures for all readers, such as explicit vocabulary instruction and close-reading lessons for boosting comprehension. Cohort performance over time has been inconsistent in reading. The new elementary literacy curriculum, Intereading, will spiral foundational skills and concepts throughout the school years, and offer a richer variety of texts to support reading comprehension. To summarize, District 25's overall proficiency in science, math, and ELA increased over the last school year and exceeds those of the state and neighboring districts. District 25 students are growing as expected or achieving higher-than-expected growth. Proficiency gaps exist between student groups. However, proficiency gaps for our ML learners narrowed this year. Again, to close gaps, lower-performing groups like students with IEPs must grow at higher rates. The Department of Student Learning continues to analyze student assessment data internally with building leaders and together with program review committees to identify areas for celebration and growth. District 24 buildings, excuse me, District 25 buildings continue to use math assessment data throughout the school year, and specifically during school-based data days three times a year, to determine which students need intervention and enrichment within and outside of the classroom. So we'll take any questions at the end of the presentation, but Brian, it's on to you.
Thank you very much, Amanda. So I will continue the rest of the presentation with the Illinois Report Card. Yeah, let's, yeah, let's see how our teamwork can go. No, you do it, you do it. Yeah. So the Illinois Report Card. The first visual when you look at the Illinois Report Card, it was released on October 30th for all of the schools throughout the state of Illinois. And this is the first visual that you can use as a comparison for all of the districts, and then you can dig deeper. The next slide shows all of the schools and their overall summative designations. We had four schools that came out as exemplary, and five schools that came out as commendable. On the next slide, this is the next interesting visual that I think is exciting to look at. I have all of these as a PDF attachment in Board Docs for you to view as well. I just shared one as an example, from Ivy Hill being an exemplary school. The next slide shows the cut score for which schools were exemplary and which ones were commendable, at an 84.04. So schools to the right got the designation as exemplary, schools to the left of 84.04 are designated as commendable. The next dotted line, we were doing so good, we're doing great. Yeah, I know. I teased it. The other cut score that is below commendable is at 40.00. All of our schools are either commendable or exemplary. The next slide shows South Middle School, and you will see where they land on the chart. They are just below the cut line for the exemplary. I will just share with you, having been to a conference in Springfield, the state is looking to redo how they designate schools, because right now, it's just a certain percentage. So that line of 84.04 is only there because of 10% of the schools in the state are above it. It doesn't mean that all schools should get 84% or higher, because if there were 10% that were below, it could go down. So there are schools that are designated as, more on the other side of the spectrum, as commendable, right above the 40.00, yet they have no growth that they're showing for their students. So unfortunately, it's like a bell curve, and the percentage gets the title of exemplary, not necessarily reaching a certain score. So the state is looking to realign how they determine the summative designations. I think you can imagine how challenging that will be. So they're sticking with this current for next school year as we know it, but I understand that they are looking to be more equitable in how they designate schools, so that it's not limited to only 10% of the schools throughout the entire state being exemplary, when there could be a significantly higher number. But all they've done is say the top 10% get a new title of exemplary. So I think that will change in our lifetime, I just don't know how many years that will take. The next slide shows the achievement gap focus, and this is just an example. When you go online to the Illinois Report Card, you can look at all of the subgroups. This is one from ELA. And what I like about this is it shows how we've either progressed or declined from 2019 to 2020 to 2021 to 22, 23, 24. So I'm just going to look at 24 this past school year. And there's the light green, which is our district, and then what looks like light blue, which is the state. The light green compared to the light green to the left in 2023, that's the achievement gap. So if you look, last year, we had a gap of 53. This year, we have a gap of 55. So that would be a point of emphasis for us to look at, because the gap from year to year on IAR is growing with kids with IEPs versus kids with non-IEPs. So these are just good visuals for us to see where are some points of emphasis for the future, and this would be one of them. And again, directing you to the Illinois Report Card, there's other subgroup charts just like this, where you can celebrate and find areas for focus. Next slide is the Equity Journey Continuum. They started this in 2022, so we have three years' worth of Equity Journey Continuums in the state. The area where we have gone from small gaps down to moderate gaps is in the middle, the learning conditions. So that would be an area of focus for us. They are using all of the data that's already embedded in the report card to determine the equity journey. There's no new data that's being used, it's all of the data that's already in the school report card. But that is the one dot that tends to go the direction we're not looking for. So the learning conditions would be the area we want to focus on. From 2022 to 2024, the third area elevating educators used to be small gaps and now is in minimal gaps. So we are showing progress in that one, but over time, we've moved backwards in the learning conditions. And the last slide, the slide you've been waiting for, questions.
Well, thank you, Dr. K., Dr. Fitzpatrick, Amanda Chernick. Thank you. That's, that's a lot of information, right? And, and really, there's no surprise when I say that this is a key interest in accountability and oversight for the board. So I know there's going to be questions around the table, so thank you in advance for your patience in helping us tease out what's at interest for us as a board and, and explaining it to us. So now, open up to my colleagues for questions.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Rich.
Becky, and thank you, and Amanda, thank you for, obviously, this length of information. Can you just, I just want to make sure I understand something. Just go to one of the ECRAs slides, like page 21. Yeah. Okay, can you just explain what percentage met benchmark is?
That's the proficiency level.
Okay, so this is a problem I have with the ECRAs process here. And I brought it up when ECRAs was here talking about it, is if you notice on the right-hand side, and we're all celebrating, yes, yes, you know, expected growth, we did really well, and all this stuff, yet 51% of our kids in math, math, don't meet the benchmark. Yet we're supposed to be celebrating this. And, you know, I wish it was one year, and candidly, and you guys all know, and I'll go on my soapbox here, I'm tired of this crap. Every year, we hear the same thing, and we still get 50%. And all I hear is, oh, we're assessing it, assessing it, assessing it. So at the beginning of this process, and, you know, this is just one, but if you go through each one of our, each one of these metrics here show that around 50% of our kids don't meet the benchmark. And how can we be happy with that? How can we be celebrating? And all we hear is, we're assessing, we're assessing. At what point are we going to do something? So when you, when you started out this presentation, you spoke of, we have some specific items that we're going to say we're doing. What are those? Because having an instructor-coach at each school, great, that's not a specific item. What are they doing? What will the result be? Because for years on end, we haven't seen it. So what is the specific things you guys are implementing that will make the change, finally?
Yeah, so, I mean, one of the things I do want to reemphasize, though, is that there has been growth. We've seen improvement. Understood, is it where we want it to be? No. Are we intending to be complacent? Certainly not. Throughout the presentation, I think Amanda did mention a number of specific things that are happening. We have a number of groups in, through our program review process, right, that are reviewing curriculum. So, for instance, middle school math, Amanda mentioned that performance, especially when looking at the cohorts, has been inconsistent. So all of our middle school math teachers are meeting together to review data. They have made a decision that they want to review a new resource that will perhaps be better-aligned with the state's standards and provide better instructional strategies moving forward. We have school buildings that are embarking on individualized goals for their schools.
Becky, start, I'm just going to stop you right there, because that's the same stuff I hear again and again every year.
Okay.
Right? And I've been on the board a while.
Yeah.
And every year, I hear, oh, they're looking at this and looking at that. So as an example, go to slide eight. If you notice, we're worse off now than we were in 2019.
Correct. As, as, I mean, that, we're not unlike other districts in the state.
And we're, you know what? And there are other districts that have far beaten our results here, and have far gone above where they are. So comparing us to the state is one thing, right? Look around the districts here in other areas, not just, you know, Mount Prospect or Wheeling or something. The districts, and I've talked to the board about this before, have far exceeded our results and gone through. They've gone ahead where we've actually gone backwards, and we're not making the trend. So if you look at this chart here, for the last at least four years, we're consistent. Nothing, nothing really has changed. Yes, okay, fine, we increased a little bit.
Yeah.
But we're, we're not making. We spent millions of dollars in ECRAs funds that were supposed to boost everything up, right? We paid for additional summer learnings, we paid for additional things during classrooms, we paid for all this. Where is this finally coming to? When, when are we going to see a result? Because right now, we're not seeing anything.
So Rich, if I could jump in, I want to start with, I'm assuming positive intent.
I don't.
But the energy, the energy doesn't always feel positive with the questioning. The last statement you said is, you gave some specifics about what might be happening. So I'm curious, you use comparisons to other districts. Have you identified which ones we can use that aren't? Right, that would be helpful. In the, the page that you had us look at with the ECRAs data, I think it was 21, while no one would deny that 48% meeting the benchmark is a reason to celebrate, overall, they are showing expected growth. It's not what we want to celebrate, but to say nothing is happening, I think leaves out a lot of work that is being done.
Again, Brian, the whole measure with ECRAs is you measure against yourself, right? So again.
Correct.
The issue is, if I start out at the beginning of the year walking, and at the end of the year, I'm, you know, on a scooter, I've shown growth.
Correct.
And according to, and the way ECRAs even was here talking about it, they'll say, oh, that's great.
Sure.
And they trend that up and said, you actually grew more.
Sure.
Right? Because you, you went maybe from a scooter and you went to a tricycle, right? But if the rest of the standard, right, is supposed to be, you were, at the beginning of the year, you were supposed to be riding, walking, and at the end of the year, you were supposed to be riding a motorcycle. We don't measure that. We celebrate the fact that, yeah, they grew, which we expect them to. But the standard is, they were supposed to be riding a motorcycle at the end of the year and are not. That's what that score says, and in each one of the ECRAs points, that's what it shows. So I'm not trying to be dispassionate about the tremendous work. I know our teachers are out there every day doing the things. I look at this and go, this is accountability on the board, on the staff, to be saying, what are we doing to provide that? We, the board, can't be there, but we, as the board, every year are seeing the same things. And so, sorry, I'm getting frustrated, because I've been waiting for this report now for, I guess, eight months? And to hear, well, they're assessing it. Becky, I'm sorry, that's just.
Yeah, and I, I need clarification on that, in terms of they're assessing it. I, I don't, I don't, what, what exactly are you referring to?
What you've said in here, they're evaluating, they're assessing, right? And action planning to review the process, which they'll develop belief standards.
Correct.
Okay, what specifically are they going to do? And I'm not trying to be mean, but what are they doing? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're engaging in.
Our action plan, our middle school math teachers are in action planning phase of the program review process.
Correct.
What are they doing?
Yeah, they're developing a professional learning plan for themselves, they're evaluating current resources.
And that will lead to dramatic results that haven't made any progress in the last six years?
It could, it could. Yeah, a real focus, we've embedded a professional learning year into our program review process.
Okay.
So instead of just relying on a new resource, we're focusing an entire year on professional learning, focusing on instructional practices.
So the next time we look at this assessment, will it have dramatic results?
In terms of math, are we talking about?
No, in terms of everything here. You're saying you guys are doing everything. What is that everything?
Yeah, I didn't say we're doing everything.
Okay.
Yeah. Except, we do have committees, we have all middle school math teachers engaging in a process where they're looking at and analyzing data that has not been done before in the processes that took place in previous years. They're analyzing that data, they're developing a professional learning plan, they're developing some targets for themselves, which we do believe will result in growth. And there is, I mean, there is the growth, too. I mean, there's the part, yeah, is, do we want to see more growth? Of course, that's why we continue to work on these things.
So can I just maybe understand just one part here? You've talked about they're now looking at data that they didn't have before? What data did they not have before?
No, we, we are requiring our teachers to engage in that process more of looking at their own data, to determine instructional moves that they want to make, to determine instructional practice areas that they might want to focus on. So I guess it's fair to say, we are much more data-driven than we have ever been.
So all the teachers have all the resources they need, all the data that they need?
Yeah, I mean.
To achieve results.
If we talk about, we just finished up our Fall Data Days, where teachers do have access to information in the MAP platform, they can sort their data in a variety of different ways to determine which students need intervention. They then spend time, you might be aware of our Strategic Academic Time during the school day, which is where teachers can customize instruction for students based on the data that they're seeing and the growth that they're seeing in their students. I mean, those are all important instructional moves that teachers are making.
Liz, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Becky, I appreciate that you said the South and Thomas teachers are working together on the, the math plan. And I, I look at the different schools and it looks like there's growth everywhere. Is there an opportunity for the elementary school teachers to get together, or the instructional coaches to kind of even anecdotally share what's working in certain buildings over other buildings? Is that something that we are providing the time and support for, for teachers and coaches to do that?
Yeah. I can specifically maybe talk to literacy, where our literacy committee is comprised of individuals from across the district. So during this professional learning year, especially those teachers that are early implementers of our new curriculum are then able to come together throughout the year to share, you know, what strategies they're using, which resources they are finding most effective. And it's also an opportunity for them to get additional professional learning. So that is also an across-the-district effort.
Thank you. Because I, I think that when we have these little pockets of spark, you know, it'd be great to be able to kindle that and share that.
Yeah. That's something, I don't know if the board recalls, we talked a little bit about that process even last year, where we embark on looking at our information to not only take a look at areas where we need more growth, but also areas that are working well, to see if that might be something that we could replicate in, across other schools in the district.
Other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
Thank you again, Dr. Fitzpatrick and Ms. Ternick for your presentation and for sharing this data with the board. If you could go back to slide 13 for a moment, I have a question. You mentioned on this slide, the instructional coaches supporting teachers with data-driven instruction. I, I was curious if that piece of information was included on this particular slide, which is about IAR math growth. Does that, does that imply that the instructional coaches are focusing on math instruction or on multi-language learner targeting in their coaching strategies?
That's part of, so is, because our district ascribes to the student-centered coaching framework, teachers bring forth areas that they feel they want to help their students grow in. So currently, we have either full coaching cycles or planning consultations with teachers that are focused, a teacher might come forward and say, I'm noticing, I'm, I, you know, the ML students in, in my particular class aren't making the kind of growth that I would hope for. Can we work together on, kind of, first of all, taking a look at the data with those students, and then maybe determining what some additional instructional moves could look like to hopefully further their growth. So there are, currently are some efforts being made that do focus on some of our subgroups, and certainly on specific content areas, math being a big one, since we're now in our second year of implementation with that new curriculum.
Thank you. So that, that being the case, is it also correct to assume that, that doesn't limit instructional coaches to focusing on math?
Absolutely not. No, no, no.
If a teacher approaches a coach and said, I'd like to do a coaching cycle around ELA, science, social studies, music, et cetera, then that's still an option?
Right. We currently have teachers who have partnered with our instructional coaches on music, on some of our specials classes. So, yeah, it is in no way kind of restricted to core content areas or a particular core content area. It's driven, it's really driven by student needs.
Yes, Mr. President. Thanks for the presentation.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to point my question, put Dr. Kane, let's see for a second. So Dr. Kane, you know, in, in the future, we don't have the, the kind of reflections right now on the slide 37, the D25 Equity Journey Continuum. As, you know, you had talked about the learning conditions. It'd be grateful for us as board members to understand this continuum a little bit more. Like, how is ISBE collecting this information? Like, how they, what, what, are they asking us for information, we're giving it to them, and then they're rating us? And then where, when we're looking at learning conditions that you had mentioned, where are they seeing opportunities for growth for us? So just a little bit more information for us to understand. What, what does this all mean and how are they charting this for us?
Yeah. I anticipated someone might ask about that. And while I don't have an answer that's going to make you walk out of here doing jumping jacks, I do want you to know that the information that they're using to determine where schools land in these four steps, from minimal gaps all the way to large gaps, is all of the data that's already in the system. So IAR data is being used, but then they're digging into subgroups. And so one of the subgroups I shared was the gap between students with IEPs and non-IEP students. So if your gap continues to grow, it's going to impact where we land on these pieces. But it doesn't specifically state that, and it doesn't show, if you improve this metric, you're going to move into small gaps. It's not that clear. So, but all of those subgroups, all of them will impact. It just doesn't show you exactly how and to what level it will impact where you land, which is why you don't see a lot of information on the equity journey. Like, otherwise, they would point out, improve these three pieces and you'll move over to small gaps. They, it's not built that way.
Yeah.
So it's similar to when Rich talks about ECR, like, there is things happening with algorithms underneath the data, but they're not pulling in new data, they're not creating new scores, but they're using them to impact where you land on the gaps.
Yeah. And, and thank you for that. And, and I always walk out of here with jumping jacks, so I will.
Always. Phenomenal.
No, but it'd be interesting, from an ISBE standpoint, for districts like ourselves, who are very interested in continuing to grow in the equity journey, it'd be interesting to kind of have, for us to advocate, and maybe from the superintendent's standpoint or from a board's standpoint, but systemically to say, hey, it'd be great for us to know, what are you looking at and how can we improve and what does this all mean? I feel like it's, it's still a little, sounds like it's still a little bit vague and a little bit more specific information top-down to us at the district level across the state would be helpful.
Yeah. I'll read to you what they advertise as to what is it. So the Equity Journey Continuum is an informational tool to help districts view their data through the lens of equity. It identifies gaps in student achievement, opportunities, and supports by analyzing data that the district already collects in the report to ISBE. So even there, they're not identifying specifics that are impacting it. But it's not stories we give. It's, supports could be, do you have intervention? It's targeting students with IEPs or students that are, you know, below the benchmark but don't have a 504 IEP. So it could be, what supports do you have for bilingual students? So they don't specifically state it.
Yeah.
And it's not built around a story that you share with them that will impact it.
Yeah, that's interesting. And something like learning conditions that be, like, from the data that we're already giving them, it'd be interesting, like, how do you carve out learning conditions? So interesting conversation and as far as just how this is all happening. So thanks for the information that you did provide. Thank you.
Other questions? I have a, a number of questions. If we could look at slide four, please. And just wanted to talk about what I noticed there and make sure I'm really interpreting correctly. So I, I definitely noticed that we see a shift upward, correct? And, and you did say it increased by nine points, but also within those tiers, I noticed, we could probably celebrate that there were fewer students in those lower tiers, like proportionally, right? Like, last year, we had 6.1 in the red zone and 3.2. So not only was there a shift, but noticing that, yes, it shifted up, but more of those students are in there. Is that correct to say?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. And you, I had a question, you explained the banding earlier. So if we could go to slide five. And just a simple question, what would be, I'm going to say a term, I don't know if it's the right one, but you'll maybe know where I'm going for. What is a statistically significant difference between the proficiency? So we see there's a difference between the schools, but what is like, is 81 to 84 really? Yes, it's a difference and we want all schools to be high achieving, but, you know, does that, you see where I'm going? Like, could you help us really dial in, like?
I see your question, but I honestly don't know. I would have to, I could run the numbers if you're interested in what the standard deviation would be, just to see how far apart they are. But
Yeah.
I will say, overall, our, our schools are really doing a fantastic job in science. So of course, we want all of our students to be top, top performers.
Sure.
But I, I couldn't give you that exact answer right now.
Yeah. And you understand where I'm coming, like, where do we?
Yeah.
Or maybe that they're not significant, you know, from 79 to 84 and
Right.
You know, we're, we're just, we're, we're in the right zone and maybe we just want to move everyone up, so.
Yeah. And I mean, added to that, like, just looking at this in particular, I mean, we'd take a look at Greenbrier with 91. That would be one of those examples that I was talking about when I responded to Liz's question about like, huh, what's, you know, what's going on at Greenbrier? Maybe we want to learn a little bit more about what might be happening there and if that might be something that we could replicate across other schools.
Yep. If, and then we talked about in here, you mentioned the action phase. Can you ever so briefly remind us that circle?
Sure.
What are the different phases with curriculum?
Yeah. The first phase is research, where really that's something that the Department of Student Learning, more specifically, the content coordinator, the program coordinator, spends time gathering information about what other districts are doing in that arena, what are considered best practices. They're gathering resources that they're going to then use with the committee that happens in that next year, which is the action planning phase. That's where we bring together, in the case of middle school, it's all the content teachers, so all middle school science teachers. In the case of elementary, obviously, that's a large number. So we bring together a representation of all schools, a variety of different roles during that action planning year. We've talked about a couple of things that take place during that time. One of the major charges is to really evaluate how our students are performing, whether or not it looks as though we should be investigating any shifts in our instructional practices or our core or supplemental resources. That might be a year when new materials are piloted. In some cases, the data might show us, like middle school science, currently, they just made the decision that, no, we feel pretty good about our scores. We feel pretty confident in the resource we have. We just now want to devote more time to our instructional practices and really refining those. So after the action planning year, that next year, we spend an entire year on professional learning. So right now, we're in professional learning for literacy, where we talked about how those teachers are engaged in a book study to refine their practices ahead of adopting the new resource next year. We then have two years of what we call implementation year one and year two. And then the final year of our program review process is monitor and refine, where we're really gathering data about how the students are performing and queuing that up kind of for that next research year.
So the cycle is six years?
Correct.
And so could you, again, layman's terms briefly, along the way, how do course corrections? How do, I mean, I don't imagine, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, that you set a course in year one and don't change what your plan until year six, right? So could you explain to us?
Sure.
What happens in between?
Yeah. Well, currently, we have our early implementers for the new literacy resource, right? So the benefit of that is now we have our own teachers who are evaluating the resources effectiveness relative to our own students. They're developing resources that then are going to be shared with all the teachers when they implement next year. So ahead of that implementation, we're refining our scope and sequence, you know, the order in which we're instructing certain topics. We're reviewing our report card. Do the standards, the reporting standards that we have in our report cards still make sense? Teachers are developing different tools to assist other teachers in efficiently utilizing the new curriculum. We are looking at data on those students during this time to determine, is there, are we seeing movement in the direction that we want? We might at some point say to ourselves, oh, gosh, okay, this is, this particular aspect of the resource is working well, but is there a supplemental resource that we might want to take a closer look at? Something that might support us better in the area of writing, let's say, or are kids, or are any of our students needing additional practice? That's where we talked about, like, a more personalized learning platform. You might be aware of them. Students sometimes use different platforms, more so to do practice as opposed to direct instruction. So we have the program review process to ensure that we're regularly checking in, but it really, at any point during that process, there can still be incremental shifts that are being made. At data review meetings three times a year, one of the first questions we ask is, are we seeing that 80% of our students are being successful with tier-one instruction? If we don't see that, that's like immediate, we head into, now we need to kind of analyze what, why might that be the case? Do we want to make a course correction at that point? We do it again in winter and we do it again in the spring. So it's happening multiple times throughout the year.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. So just a general question, and I, I put it under the ISA, but I think we have it in a lot of places. So like, Amanda, you shared, you know, 79 out of 900 was for proficiency, right? Is that, so let me, let me ask you in a way that a parent might ask me when we run at each other at Mariano's. So if I'm not proficient as a student, am I not performing at grade level? Am I getting Ds on tests? And I'm, I'm, I know you're, you're probably like, these are really crude, but these are the conversations we might have with a family, right? That, or when we talk about not meeting proficiency. So could you give it a different lens? And, and I'm going to ask some follow-on questions and you can just go where you want with, but like, what would a top 10% in the state school look like? We just talked about that with the, with the school report card, right? There's only 10% of the schools that are at that top tier. What would that look like in proficiency? And, and I could, I could see maybe some of the answers would be like, Greg, we don't compare to the state. That's fine. You can reframe it. But could you engage with some of those, what I'm asking?
Yeah. I mean, I guess going to the, kind of, the first question you posed about sort of proficiency, right?
Yeah.
It's all relative to state standards. So
Okay.
Those are state standards that are specific to that grade level.
Sure.
So if a student is not proficient or exceeding, really, we do look at that as a student who isn't meeting then those grade-level standards.
Okay. So, yeah. So I'm not, thank you.
Right. Yeah.
In the tier-one curriculum, the everybody curriculum in my grade level in that subject area, that means
Correct.
I'm not really, not where we want the student to be.
Correct.
Grade-level expectation. Okay.
Correct. Yes. And then, can you give me a little more about the 10% school? Yeah.
So, so Rich talked a little bit about other districts. So without naming districts, if we're trying to understand as a board, we always want, we want continuous improvement and we want to set high standards. And, and if it's a not write-down answer, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
But like, if you could, I mean, what would, what does that number look like in proficiency for ISA? If it's one of the top 10% in, top 25% in the state, of schools in the state? You know, like, is there a number or is that not a meaningful, you can, again, you could reframe it for me if there's a better way to...
Yeah. I mean, um...
And anyone else can help me out if, if I'm not asking it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You know, my thought, as, as, you know, some of the questions are bounding about, I, I care a lot more about how we compare to the other district to 14 feeder districts. So I, you know, this is a slide that helps me visually and as a parent and as a board member, you know, because the state average, you know, no offense to the wonderful state of Illinois, but, you know, it's a pretty big state, a lot of rural, a lot of really big districts down south, a lot of really, really small districts up in the north, north shore there, right? So, you know, this spread, now I've got three years of data here, I know it's very high level, but it's a sum of... years of data here. I know it's very high level, but it's a summative slide that says a lot, you know, compared to our districts. First of all, we, we took a dip the prior year, but overall trajectory, right? The overall proficiency went from a seventy-six to an eighty-four. I see improvement. I draw a line, call it a mean, whatever you want, across all the other districts. The next best one is District D. I don't necessarily care what district it is. District D is a seventy-nine. That's a pretty significant delta. So we're, we're five points, if my quick Chicago math is accurate, we're five points higher than the next best district in the same year in overall proficiency. This is a slide that I get all that from, right? So I guess, Greg, I kind of stole your, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to steal the mic here, but
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
You know, to your point about, you know, that's reality. These are our neighboring districts. How are we performing when we all collectively send our kids into whatever District two fourteen school they're fortunate enough to go into? And at least as far as IAR goes, I got a pretty good sense of where we're at with that. Now, let's jump to, where's my slide numbers here? The red one. Slide ten. Similar story, not as big of a delta from the next best district, but again, overall trajectory from a forty-nine to a fifty-one, meeting or exceeding expectations. Again, great, we're way higher than the state average, but averages are averages, right? Look at the other schools. We're still at a, you know, year to year, we're at a, you know, three, four percent gap from the next highest school. And if you were to average us against the other four, or however you want to look at that, you know, the District A and the District E would bring that whole average down. So now, if you look at us compared to the average of those other, whatever it is, one, two, three, four, five districts, significantly above them. So a quick question while I'm on my soapbox. Do we have that kind of data for MAP?
Not every district
Yeah.
takes MAP. So including some of the other sender districts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I kind of thought. I kind of wish I had that lens. So, you know, same thing for ELA. If you want to jump to the slide, you can, but that one's more similar to, to the IAR. Next best district this year in the feeder districts is a fifty-five or a sixty-three. Significant delta. So the last thing I'll say is if we can jump to slide twenty-one, just to go back to the one that we were kind of looking at when Rich started us out, and I kind of had asked and said this before, first of all, I think we have to temper this. This is a standardized test, right? Second of all, it's once a year, it's a snapshot in time, right? It's not like a, it's not like a stock we continue, we expect to, what? Well, yeah, but I mean, we're looking at
Yeah.
A year's worth of results.
Actually, three times. Yeah.
Those same kids are going to be in a different grade next year and a new, you know, it's, so it's, it's constantly this. It's not going to be like a stock chart that you expect to have ever, ever growing until we reach a hundred percent. So I think we have to manage our expectations when it comes to numbers, given the context. It's an every-year thing. It's a whole new batch of students and it's a whole new district every single year. We lose our eighth graders, we get a new batch of first graders. We're trying to make improvements, but again, it's not going to be a, a growth curve like this. The takeaways from this slide, I think I've asked this before, probably doesn't matter, but like the benchmark. What is the benchmark? Is it a number?
It is. Yeah.
Okay. So great. So only half of our schools are, looking at slide twenty-one, only half of our schools are meeting the benchmark. That's not how I look at this slide. I look at, if you add the sixty-three plus the twenty-two, right? At the bottom, am I doing my math right?
Yep. That's correct.
Eighty-five percent of our kids are showing expected or higher growth. That's a number that I look at. I don't look at only half are meeting this benchmark, this arbitrary benchmark, wherever we decide to draw that line. I look at that eighty-something percent that's meeting expected growth or exceeding it. Growth, right? Let's look at how they're growing, how they're improving, not where they are to a benchmark. That's like comparing something to a mean number. It's, it's meaningless. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Then I also wanted to ask about the MAP slides. We had that district review, but that was it.
Thank you, Brian. I'm going to jump back in. Okay. If we could go to slide nine. And I would love for you to share a little bit more. I know there's notes on this in the slide, but my attention really was drawn to that discrepancy from fifth to sixth grade. And I, I wrote here, was, is this new or always there? I mean, I can see these are cohorts over time, but in particular, the minutes, like, like that's, that's a lot. I don't remember ever knowing that before. And if I did, and I would have drawn attention to it, I would think, but from sixty to forty, I'm assuming you mean a day?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And what are the minutes? So I'll try and throw out all my questions and you can go with it, but like, what are the minutes for seventh and eighth? Again, is this a
The same.
New curricular change?
Mm-hmm.
No? So it seems like, as I look at this, there's now at least three grade levels that have seen a dip in sixth grade. Like, there's a sixth grade situation here, and you've highlighted at least one instructional element that could be looked at. So could you comment a little bit more on that? Again, how's it compared to seventh and eighth? When did, has this always been there? It's been there at least three years, I'm guessing.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, this is, this information is kind of, is really longstanding. So yeah. Gosh, I couldn't even put a number on it. It predates me being in DSL. So all elementary, sixty minutes, and then sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are all forty minutes for math. And as you noted, this is one piece of information that we're kind of looking at. So during that action planning year, we're having conversations about the amount of time allocated. And, you know, is it everything from, do we need more time? Or do we need a resource that more matches the time that we have? I mean, there's a couple of different ways to look at that. So our middle school teachers are spending time analyzing that. But yeah, these aren't any pieces of information that have changed recently.
So, and Alex, what I want to express here is why, and again, I know I, this isn't my first time sitting here with you folks, you know, talking about this, but maybe this just really, this slide nine drove it home, is that what, yeah, what is happening when those, they moved to sixth grade? And it's not to, you know, it's, it's not just teachers. What is everything in the system? And it's definitely a pattern.
Yeah.
And so I know, I would say to you, Dr. K, and maybe others around the table, is at an appropriate time in the future, hopefully not too far, is to hear, here's what we found, here's what we decided, here's what we, you know, and whatever it is. Because, because even that's going to take time, right? And then you implement the change and then you see the effect of that change.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And again, we're in the middle of it, so I'm pretty confident you're going to be hearing something soon. But, I mean, we do have the challenge of, we have to pull our teachers out to come to these meetings to work on this. So it's a balance of how often can we take them out? And yet, they're important to the conversation, so we can't leave them out. So we do allocate as much time as we feel we can to that task. And like you said, they're analyzing the resources. We have a different math resource in elementary than we do in middle school. And with that comes some, a different focus on strategies. So that's what our team is looking at right now. Perhaps, do we need to make sure that there's better alignment between some of those instructional strategies, sort of curriculum agnostic? Is it even, are instructional strategies kind of the change that we want to make? Or is it actually, do we need the, the resource to support that change in instructional practice?
Yeah. And I, I want to acknowledge, right, like, I had a thought to share, but just that, you know, it does look like in seventh and eighth grade, our, our students are achieving and growing.
Yeah.
So that's good.
Right.
It's not, we're not setting a new set point that's lower.
Correct.
And that, as you say, there's a lot to it. So I'm not here to interrogate how
Sure.
this information comes back to the board at all.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But I think that's part of a challenge for us that when we sit here once a month, you, you folks are in the trenches every day impacting change on this.
Yeah.
That's why I say to you, Dr. K, if you could help us to mark this moment and say, could you, could you, it's not, not a question that you will do something, but could you bring it back? You know, and I'm just one member. We've got to have consensus around that.
Yeah. And I think there's a reason that the amount of time was mentioned
Yeah.
and noted, that in one week, a sixth grader has a hundred less minutes of math than they had when they were in fifth grade. Now, there are structurally also other things that they're receiving in sixth grade. They're receiving forty minutes of science every day, forty minutes of social studies every day. They're receiving a world language. So it's not like it just went away and disappeared. There's other benefits for that time, but we have maintained two periods in middle school for ELA. We've also maintained one period of math every day. So there's a reason it occupies a little bit of time in our conversation and gets noted here. We do think that probably is one of the impacts, because you're having less time with students in math. So it brings up a variety of other topics when you're looking at the middle school schedule, but it's no surprise and nothing new to middle school math teachers that this has been and remains an issue. And Becky's bringing up the professional development piece. We've brought it here before. We need their input to understand what's happening in the classroom. So you either do that before school, after school, or during the day. And right now, one big model for us is the pull-out program, which then you create more issues. You're taking the expert away from the kids. So when we only have a hundred and eighty days with them, and we pull them out for, let's say, five, like, that's significant. And they're expending energy writing sub-plans. There's just a variety of factors that go in here, but the process in place, the phases are really helpful, but it comes at a drawback when we're pulling them out of the classroom all throughout the year in every subject area. So it is having a dramatic impact on our kids. I don't know if we have a numerical value on how much, but we know it's impacting the learning and the impact on the kids.
Could you, if I can move on, could you share again, I asked about, what is, you commented in several of these cohort slides, you know, achievement is inconsistent, but can I ask again, how big a delta is really like, we should really draw attention to it? I mean, we've noted sixth grade, but you know, if it's, I'm looking at this, the twenty-three, four, grade five cohort, you know, there's a little dip, but then it comes back. Like, do we worry about, I mean, at this level, are we, do we need to ask deeper questions about that? Or no? Or do you see what I'm saying? Like?
Whether you, whether you look at that and feel like that's significant enough to warrant concern?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, where, where does inconsistency become, I think Brian said, you know, we have new kids every year and that just becomes a variable, right? Or is it like, you know, we got to look at this, you know?
Well,
Where's that threshold?
Yeah. I don't know if I could give you a threshold, but I think I would add to the conversation that, so this is overall data, right?
Yeah.
There's also the conversations that happen where teachers are digging in to the specific, like, sub areas within the test. So we're also looking at things like, you know, is comprehension an area of need? You might recall from last year, we really saw within our IAR results that writing relative to the other areas was a weakness for us. So we spent a lot of time, Amanda in particular, actually spent a lot of time going out to schools, gathering some information about the schools that did well, and also providing information to teachers relative to not only taking the assessment, but reiterating the, the focus on certain types of writing that they would be expected to do on the test and, and providing more targeted instruction in those areas. So that's also a piece of it. So we kind of get to this level. We try and take a look at whether we see anything systematically that looks dramatically different. And then we kind of quickly move into then drilling down more into those kind of sub areas, so that we're not just saying we need to generally improve in writing, but like, what are, because like, time is precious, right? I mean, we got to kind of quickly move to what specific area of reading, let's say, it is that we need to target for those upcoming weeks.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank, thank you for that reminder about, yeah, how this data is, is not just general, but yes, impacts professional development, teaching.
I will say, Greg, it's interesting, the MAP math slide, the same slide for MAP math, aside from one of the cohorts, the third grade cohort for whatever reason, didn't have the same significant sixth grade dip, we'll call it.
Mm-hmm.
Pardon? I just throw that out there.
Yeah.
All of a sudden. It's more so an IAR.
Mm-hmm.
I have two more things to note, and then can go to other questions or, or move on. But in slide fifteen, is it fair to say, am I reading it correctly, to say that in large part, we either matched or exceeded our pre-COVID numbers? So twenty nineteen versus now? Is that fair?
Yeah.
Within reason. It's a small slide and I don't know about, but is that fair to say?
It would be fair to say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also to note that we have more, a greater percentage of students above the, above the zero mark, even while we meet those numbers. Okay. In slide nineteen, this is one, and I look back at previous years, and you, it came up earlier about, and it's in the student report card, the, the, students with IEPs and students who don't. And it's good to see some growth numbers. And I'll, I'll note just an overall comment. I know Rich talked about growth. Whatever you want to say about it, I would like to note that we don't see any yellows or reds. And I certainly saw more blues this year than in previous years. So I would like to note that positive trend overall and thank you for your efforts that made that happen. But what I'm interested in, whether it's here or in a different time, is I think we've, at this table, and you have acknowledged that, here you termed it more focus to, focus is needed to accelerate growth for our students with IEPs. So that, that is not new information that you're bringing to us, and it's okay to, it's fine that it's there and it's, it's worth noting. I know I would be interested in knowing what's different. So we're, we noted that, that the, that the gap is there and it's actually increasing. So this is a point in time and, and you take this data and make changes. So I'm okay with not a developed answer now, but I, I would be interested in knowing more about either what happens regularly or based on when we, when you get this information, what, what is different. And I think last year, you noted a meeting with DSS department and doing additional things. So, so it's not, I guess it's not the same comment every year, but there's, it's just not a marked change in that area, it seems. It seems. But maybe, can you, is there anything you want to comment in that area right now?
Um, you know, I think probably it would make sense to have Diane weigh in on the conversation relative to students who are receiving those type of support services. So, but as you noted, I mean, our assessment data is available to all of our departments. So we sometimes partner with other departments to sometimes offer, like, let's say, Amanda's expertise in the analysis of some of that information, and then certainly curricular expertise from some of our curriculum coordinators to kind of support other departments in, in what they're providing. We have further folded in students, support for students with multilingual needs and support for students with special ed needs into our program review process. support for students with special ed needs into our program review process, so that there's more of a holistic looking at what learning opportunities are happening for all of our students. So although our focus is primarily on tier-one instruction, you know, we're asking those other departments to kind of join us in that process of looking at the data, evaluating it, not just relative to how all of our students are doing, but these specific subgroups. But certainly, we can connect with Diane and, and come back with some more information about that particular subgroup of students with IEPs.
Yeah, and that's, and to be fair, even though it's a subgroup, it's a really, that's a broad statement, right? IEPs, I mean, that's like, that's, right, I mean, just acknowledge that right there, that's not a uniform group by any means, other than to say that they have IEPs.
Yeah, not by any, yeah, right, I mean, just in the way that all of our students have vastly different needs. We have students with IEPs who don't necessarily even have academic needs, they might have other needs, so, right, it's important to recognize the complexity and the diversity of those needs.
Any other questions from the board? Rich, go ahead.
Yes. I just want to, can we go back to Slide twenty-one? I just want to clarify two points that you guys want to make about. So, you know, I know, Brian, you made the comment about benchmark this arbitrary type of piece, but I just want to clarify, because it's just something that I heard earlier, the benchmark is set by the state, right? And not like our politicians, but these are PhD, these are smart people that really know their expertise in their job, right?
Yeah, I don't know the specifics on who exactly sets those. I mean, I do know, we've talked about this with the board, too, the benchmarks in the state of Illinois relative to other states.
They're all over the place, I get it, every state.
Yeah, ours is, if not the highest benchmark.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, as we're sharing different pieces of data, right? That's another piece of data that I, honestly, I think you were just at a conference, I was too, where for some reason they're highlighting Illinois because of that fact.
So just so we're clear, the benchmark means this is their, their expectation that, you know, second grader, third grader, whatever, should be able to do these things, right?
They should be able to hit that benchmark.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so if they're not hitting that benchmark.
Right.
They're not meeting the standards that were set.
I'd have to say that's a pretty broad statement, and that was my point. A benchmark is a word, first of all, and regardless of the score that.
It's a pretty critical, very critical in any type of industry, a benchmark is, this is what you're rated against.
It's a number, is it a minimum acceptable number, is it?
This is, well, again, the benchmark says.
To say that half are above and half are below a benchmark, if that benchmark is a mean number, then fifty percent's great.
Well, the benchmark really means the benchmark. This is where the expectation.
It's a word.
No, it's a, it's a pretty important, whatever industry you look at, a benchmark is a benchmark. So as an example, if you're saying the benchmark for data security is this, well, guess what? If you're not at that, you're failing because you're not at the benchmark, right? So it's not an arbitrary thing, or yes or no, it's the benchmark, but you kind of go along with my thought here. If the benchmark is supposed to represent the standard, right, then, and I know we do standard-based report cards, so if we have fifty percent of our kids that aren't meeting the benchmark, AKA the standard, what do our report cards say? Are the report cards saying that they're not meeting standards? Because there's a three-level thing, they say they're either meeting the standard, they're going to the standard, or they're not at the standard. So what do our report cards say?
Can I just back up a little bit?
Sure.
Because I, I want to say that the Illinois learning standards, there's a lot of learning standards, and so when we look at a proficiency level, it might suggest that students might be proficient in some of the standards, but not others. It's, you know, it's a skill score, so it's looking at different subtests and creating a score based on that. So to say there's a benchmark, but that benchmark embeds many Illinois learning standards within it.
I don't disagree, that's fine, but that's the totality, that's what education is. It's not just, you know, do I know how to count one to two, but it's the totality of it. So if you, in every area, if you count the totality of what, then you're measuring apples and apples together.
Exactly.
It's like our report card is not, oh, we don't, we don't say specifically, oh, it's only on this particular standard, we don't look at all the standards, it's the totality of where the student should be based upon the standards for that grade. So I'm just trying now correlate, if fifty percent of our kids don't meet standards over here on the benchmark, do fifty, are fifty percent of our report cards designating that, showing that they're not meeting standards? Well, then, aren't we kind of goofy there?
But again, it's different, it's different standards. I mean, we're, we're, both are using the Illinois learning standards, but again, when you look at a skill score, it's taking four or five different subtests, so students might be very proficient in maybe three of the subtests, but maybe not in the other two, and those, that then combines to make a skill score, maybe they don't quite meet that benchmark. But it doesn't mean they don't meet the standards, and they could be excelling in those same standards on the report card as well.
Are you asking what the reality is? Yeah, I mean, fifty percent of our students are not failing.
It's, it's one snapshot, though, right? The, the IAR is a snapshot at the end of the school year, whereas when we're collecting evidence for report cards, it's collected multiple data points over an entire trimester, so it's a little bit more accurate depicting what students are able to learn within the classroom. Again, it's a snapshot, it's a snapshot in time, a report card and a standardized assessment are, are different.
Oh, yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to offer, on the interest of time, as according to our agenda, we've kind of gone over, I wonder if there's a Part B to this discussion, or if, how we can maneuver it so we can get through the other agenda items we have today. The question for the board.
Go ahead, Liz, please.
If I could just say that, for all of us to keep in mind, that the MAP test is a multiple-choice test, and having kids who have just transitioned from elementary school to middle school, if you have a headache on that day, if you got in a fight with your friend, it's, it is a snapshot, and looking at the report cards, the report cards that I've seen, there are standards, and there are specific activities and projects that lead the teachers to assess. So yes, when you're looking at your standards, as a parent, looking at a standards-based report card, I can see this is a skill, and my child proved that he or she can do this skill because they did this project and that project and took this test and gave a speech, whatever it may be. So I think, yes, we all have to deal with these scores, yes, it is consistent, but we have to keep in mind, this is a multiple-choice test, and that isn't really an accurate picture of how we necessarily teach and learn our students, in my opinion. So I appreciate that we may want to move on, that's just something I wanted to say.
Thank you, Liz.
Mr. President.
Yes, Kevin.
Just one quick clarifying question about the MAP data, are we recording and reporting this data spring to spring or fall to spring?
Are you talking about ECRA's, the, the growth up here?
Yes.
So ECRA bases their projections for students based on their spring assessment data, but it's not just their MAP data, they also include their IAR data. So this was spring, it would be spring to spring, but again, it's also combining the other assessment with the growth projections.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on, and I know, Dr. Kay, you're taking notes, and, and thank you again for your patience as we walk through all these questions and discussions. I don't know that the board has given voice to particular action at all, but maybe some interest in cer- certain areas, and if, you know, if those can come back, I think there would be some appreciation, so, but thank you again.
Thank you.
Our next section on the agenda tonight is business and finance, and we have an information item for the tentative tax levy, so we'll ask Stacy if you could give us your report.
Thank you. The presentation is available in Board Docs along with the Certificative Tax Levy Cash Balances by Fund, a new report effective with this school year, we're required to present related to Public Act 1030394, and as well as the proposed levy and the information regarding the public notice. So just as we look at levying our taxes, remember that our tax levy represents our largest revenue source, eighty-three percent of all of our revenues, and funds the majority of the education and services we provide to students in District Twenty-Five. It supports our low class sizes, curriculum, extracurricular activities, professional development, custodial maintenance services, technology, and all of the other staff who provide the growing services for our students. I mentioned Public Act 1030394, effective with this school year. It requires that we calculate the annual average expenditures in our operational funds, which they label as the Education Fund, the Transportation Fund, and the Operations and Maintenance Fund. And we look at the average expenditures for the previous three fiscal years based on what is reported in our audited financial reports, obviously, we don't have that information for 2023, 2024, so we're using our unaudited numbers. If the combined reserve balance of those funds exceeds two and a half times the average annual expenditures, or two-hundred-and-fifty percent, then the school board must adopt and file with the State Board of Education a written proposal as to how we would reduce those fund balances over the next couple of years. So you can see, based on the calculation required with this new law, that for these three funds, our average expense, three years of expenses, our fund balance to average of that is just under seventy percent, so therefore, we are well below the two-hundred-and-fifty percent requirement that require, that would require us to perform any additional action. And while we aim for a fund balance target between forty and sixty percent across all funds, this law is only looking at these three funds. Again, this information is required to be presented as part of the tentative tax levy, thus you're seeing it here tonight. Just as a reminder, what I am proposing tonight and what the board will vote on in December is the tax levy. We can ask for whatever we want in terms of what we want, the increase we want to the county clerk, but the extension billed to the taxpayers is limited by the tax cap formula determined at the county clerk's office. Again, just a reminder, the district levies a dollar amount, and that dollar amount is capped per the tax cap, so simplistic, most simplistic formula, way to look at it, is whatever that dollar amount increases, whatever our total EAV in the district comes in at, if it comes in higher, our tax rate will decrease, if it comes in lower, our tax rate will increase to make sure we get that dollar amount, and you can see that as well in the chart, as our tax rate and our, our percent change in our tax rate and our percent change, percent change in our EAV are opposite, are indirectly proportional. This chart shows you historical information on the tax levy, as you can see in the first, third column, the new growth remains below one percent. The green highlights are just intended to show you that the year before a triennial reassessment, so the years that are highlighted in yellow in 2024 would be, this 24 levy we're looking at would be the year before the triennial. We do historically see a decrease in the overall total assessments, which I am projecting at a decrease of two percent for the 2024 levy. And then, in terms of CPI, just since the inception of tax caps, the ten-year average has remained between two and two and a half percent, even with these last two years of the five percent CPI increases. And then, just quickly, as always, I like to recap the prior year tax levy. So the CPI was five percent, we ended up having zero-point-two percent new growth, so we would have expected our overall increase, and the increase in our limited funds was the five-point-two percent. We did abate one-point-nine million of the bond levy last year to reduce the impact on taxpayers, so the actual increase for the district was two-point-two percent for last year. In terms of our levy and our extension, while we may levy a two-point-two percent increase, or a five or six percent increase, that doesn't necessarily mean every taxpayer in the district will get that same impact on their tax bill, because there is a piece of their total property EAV as a percentage of the total district EAV that impacts it. So as long as a taxpayer's property assessment increase was close to that two-point-two percent last year, then they would have seen a two-point-two percent increase in their tax bill, but if their assessment changed more than that two-point-two percent, they may have seen something different than that two-point-two percent increase in their bill. So in terms of the 2024 levy, a reminder of the formula, tax caps limit us to the prior extension and increase of five percent of CPI, so the CPI for the 2024 levy is three-point-four percent. And then, I'm anticipating, as I typically do, new growth may come in around point-seven percent, so that our maximum allowable levy would be eighty-seven-point-two million. Based on that, and to be sure that we capture everything that we're entitled to, I am recommending a tentative tax levy of eighty-seven-point-eight million. The bond and interest levy is set at the time we sold the bonds, and again, this, as you see in this chart and saw before, we did abate one-point-nine million of it last year. I am not at this time proposing that we do that again with a three-point-four percent CPI. Just a reminder that we always request more than we know that we're entitled to, which is the yellow line on the graph. The red line represents the CPI increase every year, and the blue line represents what we actually, what our extensions actually were at. So you see the blue line trends closely with CPI because it is tied to CPI plus whatever new growth is. Again, this chart just shows we always get less than what we asked for. The white line represents the average overall increase over this course of time, and then again, just another way to see in 2023, that while we levied a five-point-seven-four percent total increase with the abatement, the actual extension was two-point-two-four percent. While I am proposing that eighty-seven-point-two million dollar levy, as I showed in the slide with the maximum allowable anticipated levy would be eighty-seven, sorry, eighty-two point, sorry, eighty-seven-point-two is the projec- 82 point, sorry, 87.2 is the projected actual, what I would anticipate we're entitled to. So while we levy 87.8, I would anticipate it coming closer to the yellow column of 87.2. Terms of the impact on a taxpayer, again, with the multiplier, that's where I show the 2% decrease in the overall state factor that is placed against property assessments. The impact of a norm, of the normal tax increase based on the 3.4% would be about $127. And then the difference of the $95 is the increase from the bonds that we didn't levy last year, but I am proposing we do levy this year. And again, the actual increase to any individual taxpayer will ultimately depend on the change in their personal property EAV as a percentage of the total EAV. And with that, I would anticipate having the public hearing at, on the December 10th, right before the board meeting with a vote on the levy. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Stacy, for walking us through that. Any questions from the board for Stacy? Okay, I think we're ready to move on to our next item. Thank you again. Then the next item is an action item for the workers' compensation renewal. Can I have a motion, please? Yes, Kevin.
Renewal through the Illinois Public Risk Fund as presented.
Thank you, Kevin. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. And Stacy, if you could walk us through this piece.
Sure. We are part of a pool, the Illinois Public Risk Pool, Risk Fund Pool for our workers' compensation insurance and the renewal is 11.29% increase of more than half of that, six and a half percent is due to our significant increase in projected payroll for this year because of all the positions we added, the full day kindergarten, et cetera. I do anticipate the overall cost after an audit will go down because as we all know, when I gave them that number, it included what was in the budget for salaries and we know we didn't fill all of those positions. We also know we have a lot of positions that we'd like to fill that we can't fill. So overall, I assume total salaries will come down. And then the other 5% increase is based on the change from the state in terms of the class codes and the, and our experience of the rates they've established. Every year when we do go through an audit, they do come back and look at actual payrolls associated with those rates. So two years ago, we saw a refund of $45,000 in premium. For 2023, we actually owed an additional $14,000 in premium. So it really does just depend on where our actual salaries fall in line with what I project. And I have to give those projections in June for December. So I don't even have final budget numbers to give them. So that's why there could be some differences.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions? All right, seeing none. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Polato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Nierman?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries 6-0. And then we'll now move to another action item, which is the 2025 ISBE School Maintenance Project Grant. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2025 School Maintenance Project Grant application as presented.
Thank you, Kevin. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. Stacy, again, please.
Yes, we've applied for this grant in the past. I'm, actually was surprised that it was put out again this year, but happy to certainly apply for it. We did get it last year for the $50,000. So we have written this year to offset some of the costs at Westgate in the front office as part of the bids that went out for Westgate School. There was some work in the front office with some HVAC. We are holding off on that work till next summer. The bids came in extremely high, so we're re-looking at what we're intending to do. So we're writing the grant to help cover a balance of, a portion of that cost. And this grant does require that the board sign off on the submission of the grant before we can submit the application.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions? All right, seeing none. Lana, again, oh, please, go ahead, Rich.
Just a, maybe just a, you know, I know every once in a while we hear about the grants and things like that. Just want to commend the staff overall. I don't know if there's a benchmark for grants, but I think the district does a great job at finding grants. What's that? More, okay, sorry, sorry. But you guys do a great job of finding grants out of wherever you can to offset costs. So, thank you.
Thank you for that comment, Rich, and well played. Okay. So Lana, again, if you could please call the vote.
Scott Polato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Nierman? Jogi?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. And the motion carries 6-0. We are now moving to Dr. Kay's section of the agenda, the superintendent report. And first up is our Freedom of Information Act report. Dr. Kay, can you take us through those items?
Yes, thank you, President Scapolato. We have, the first item is the FOIA requests, the Freedom of Information Act. And since our last meeting, we had three requests that were responded to in time. Any questions on FOIAs? All right. I heard a noise. I wasn't sure if that meant question. Got it. All right, that was just an information item. The next information item is the Board Member Day Resolution. I cannot wait for the action on this because if it's not what I expect, that'll feel a little strange. So that would be really strange, team. So what I wanted to start with was talking through from the beginning of this meeting, recognizing you guys for all of your commitment of time and energy and your mental capacity and looking at all of this information from an assessment report tonight to a tax levy to a workman's comp. So I know you guys manage a lot of information. So I wanted to adopt this resolution and hope that you take action in the direction I would hope to recognize all that you guys are doing in this capacity. So I'd like to read it if that's all right. Whereas school board members are elected to sit in trust for the diverse communities and in that capacity are charged with the meeting, with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children. And whereas the school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and prudent expenditure of tax dollars and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that our community has put in their trust. And whereas the school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for their schools that sets high standards for the education of all students, requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts, and employs district staff to carry out the day-to-day duties of educating Arlington Heights School District 25 students. And whereas school board members adopt public policy to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer board policy and are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with the state policy. And whereas the school board members are selflessly volunteering countless hours to public service with no compensation, second time we've mentioned that tonight. Whereas school districts face constant challenges and the strong dedicated leadership provided by the Arlington Heights School District 25 Board of Education has allowed student success to continue. And whereas employers are supportive of their employees who serve as school board members generously lending support and time, employers give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of the school districts and communities they represent through sometimes tremendous sacrifice to the employer. And whereas the decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life and safety in their communities, placing them as the front line of local democracy, therefore be it resolved by Arlington Heights School District 25 that we proclaim Friday, November 15th, 2024, 2024, as School Board Members Day as a way to honor those citizens who devote their time and energy for the successful education of our children and our future leaders. So the hope is that we would all take action and recognize that this Friday is supported as School Board Members Day. And this is just a way of publicly acknowledging all of the time and effort and sacrifice that you guys put in. So I hope that this action turns out the way that I'm expecting.
With that, I ask, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution recognizing Illinois School Board Member Day, November 15th, 2024.
Thank you, Kevin. And a second, please.
Let me think about that for a second. Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, Anisha. And I assume there's no questions?
We should all take the day off of work. We have this generous statement. I'm going to send this to my employer. I'm not working on Friday.
We already took the motion. We already took the motion. I'm sorry, folks. Lana, could quickly please call that vote.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Sure.
Olenichak? Nierman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Polato?
Yes. The motion carries 6-0.
All right, I'm happy that it turned out the way I was expecting. So now that you've done that, I'd like to extend one more gift to all of you. It is a rather funny one because of the temperature that I tend to keep the room at. We, on behalf of the district, wanted to get you a gift to support the temperature.
They're not warm, gentlemen?
It's the board convention, learning condition in the boardroom.
All right, Liz, you wouldn't mind adding that down, Greg?
Absolutely.
This one is for Anisha. You don't need to model it to everyone, but if you wanted to, feel free. Kevin?
I think the secretary did.
Brian? Now the rest go this way. Rich? And Greg, thank you.
So consider this the warm hug you've been waiting for. If the conditions are so cold, please feel free to wear this coat. You could put on a fourth layer tonight, Liz. But we also like that when you are out in the community, you all recognize, Greg mentioned it tonight, when you're at Mariano's, like you are the face of the district. This symbol obviously is like a beacon now if you wear it in Mariano's. But we hope that you respect the pride that we take and we know you respect the pride you take in the district. So on behalf of District 25, we just want to say thank you for adopting the resolution and for your service. Thank you. And just so you're aware, I offered one to Lana because I know she's a fan of the warmth as well. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Kay. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, no, we're not planning to do that. All right, the next topic is the IASB resolutions. It is an action item.
So Dr. Jogi, we'll turn it over to you in just a moment. We'll go through this motion. And so can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve that Dr. Anisha Jogi be appointed the 2024 IASB delegates to the 2024 IASB Delegate Assembly on behalf of Arlington Heights School District 25 and be granted the authority to vote on the IASB resolutions and the IASB constitutional amendment at the 2024 Delegate Assembly solely in accordance with the consensus of the Arlington Heights School District 25 School Board on November 12th, 2024.
Kevin, a second, please. Thank you, Rich. And I assume there's no questions on that. So Lana, if you please call the vote.
If I could say a couple of things before that, if that's okay. No, well, not about the, not about the recommended action, but I wanted to, an opportunity just if there were questions about our votes. We'll do that in a second?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll do this procedural piece and then yes, please. I'll turn it over to you. Lana, when you're ready.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Olenichak? Nierman? Jogi? Scott Polato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. Lana, the motion carries 6-0. And so now, yes, turn it over to you, Anisha.
Oh, thank you to my colleagues for the, the honor of representing our board at the, you know, the delegate assembly. I've taken, at your seats, you'll find the, I collated all the votes that you took on the different and the, not the votes, but your opinions about all the different resolutions that ISB recommended to us. I wanted this to be a time for any questions that you may have, since you've kind of sat with the information for a little bit. Any questions you may have for myself and Dr. Kay, who's really well-versed in the resolutions as well. And then this is also an opportunity to make any changes based on any conversations that we have today, since we haven't met since the last time. So I wanted to open it up to my colleagues to kind of give it a second look and or, and ask any questions you may have.
So my tally, so all the do not adopt should all be no's. So I'm that guy.
Okay. So change all?
You don't have to change them because I don't think that's going to change the overall vote at all. But those, all the do not adopts, so 7A through 10B, those should all be no's.
Got it. Okay, I'll make those changes. I had a question, Dr. Kay and my colleagues, if you could weigh in on the 7A and 7B. I was reading the resolution a little bit more, the cell phone usage, about the cell phone usage. Dr. Kay, if you could, you know, put a little bit of light, more light on that one, because I think I want to change my vote on that or my opinion on that.
So what I summarized from the information provided was that the committee agreed that cell phone usage during school is a growing concern and that research shows that it can negatively impact instructional time and student mental health. And this is the biggie, caveat. However, the committee did not support a statewide mandate and found that cell phone usage is best governed locally. So there are school districts in Illinois making that choice. So the state did not want to force it on everyone, which is why this is recommended for do not adopt. Because it's not stopping districts that want to eliminate it from doing that.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought. And in researching this a little bit more, there are a couple of states who have done this, correct? Like California, Florida, Indiana, Louisiana have gone through a statewide kind of action towards restricting cell phone usage.
Correct.
And having just kind of, you know, finished and discussing and continuing to reflect on the book, Anxious Generation, I'd like to change my vote on that one to make it where it says the resolution committee recommends do not adopt. I would, I would recommend that it does adopt. So I'm going to make that change on mine. Any other questions or comments?
I want to acknowledge and apologize the fact that I completely missed the constitutional amendment component, which is why I listed as leaving that blank.
Yeah.
Do we have a moment to discuss that since the suggestion on this documentation says that the board should discuss it in a meeting before coming to a consensus?
Yeah, and that's, and you know what, Kevin? You weren't the only one. Because it was on the second attachment, it was, some folks missed it. So yeah, we can totally go over it. I'm glad you brought it up. Dr. Kay, would you like to go over that one? And I can add to it too. On the resolutions, I'm not sure if we all have it.
You should all have it.
Yeah, it's on. Page 10 or page 20?
I see it on page 22, yep.
It's on page 20?
22.
Okay.
I suppose it depends on which one you're using.
Yeah, there is. 20 and 22. Yeah. Yeah.
So just looking at the rationale that's provided on page 10, as some people pointed out. So the rationale for the amendment states that while the current language references the use of Robert's Rules of Order, it does not specify how the association should proceed if there is a conflict between Robert's Rules of Order and the association's constitution or special rules. So this language would give the IASB the authority to adopt constitutional language and special rules that may not conform to the Robert's Rules of Order, and specify that the association's constitution and special rules outrank Robert's Rules of Order, provided no federal, state, or local laws are violated. So it really is whether or not there's a conflict with Robert's Rules.
Yeah, and parliamentary practice. And as it stands right now, we have a kind of a majority kind of leaning on yes, unless there's any changes. So I already have those tallied, even if we don't have all of them. Are we all good? Yeah. Okay, Kevin. We'll do. Yeah. Okay. There you go. That's all of us now. Okay, I think that's it. If there's no other questions or comments about it, okay, I will take our ways to the delegate assembly.
Do you feel like it's clear? You have the majority on each one?
I do. We have a clear, there is no... Yeah, we have a clear cut answer on this, so thank you.
Yeah, great.
And I'll tally up the changes and everything, and I'll give it to Dr. Kay, so it's uploaded to board docs for next time, so we have it.
Thank you, Anisha, for representing us and putting that all together.
Welcome.
Thank you for taking that on.
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Our next item was a board request for a third-party or independent audit of board policies and administrative procedures, and this is an information item. So Dr. Kay, if you could take us through this one.
Mr. President? Can I make a, just maybe a, knowing the time's already at 10 o'clock, and this is a meaty, has the potential to be a meaty subject, just to review the information, if we can postpone this particular topic to maybe next, next month or something where we can spend a little bit more time on it?
Thank you, Rich, for that suggestion, and especially as you were the first one to bring that request. Any objections? So we'll table that item. Thank you, Rich, for that suggestion. So we are now going to the data sharing agreement with Township High School District 214. This is an action item, so if I could have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the data sharing agreement with Township High School District 214 as presented.
Thank you, Kevin. A second, please. Thank you, Rich. And so, Dr. Kay, any changes from when we last heard about this?
I'm glad you asked. There are no changes. It's just finalized. We've put our name on it, and hopefully, excited to finalize this data sharing agreement between District 25 and District 214.
Great. Any questions from the board? Okay. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Neerman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana, and the motion carries 6-0. And continue on, we're nearing the close of our open session. So the next item is second reading of policies from press 116. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the policies as presented.
Thank you, Kevin. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Anisha. Dr. Kay, any changes?
Yeah, the document I'd like to bring our attention to is the overview document, and there are no changes from the first reading.
Okay. So no changes, and we gave feedback last time. Any questions at this point? All right. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Neerman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. And again, the motion carries 6-0. We are now at the community, second community input portion of our agenda. Lana, do we have any blue slips this evening? Okay. Do you not have any? So we're at the future agenda items. And are any new topics that we need to bring up here that have been talked with Dr. Kay? Okay. All right, so no future agenda items. The board will be returning to closed session to continue working on the same topics announced earlier for closed session. I'll remind you that the board, the public, that the board cannot take action during closed session, and we will not, we taking any action, excuse me, when we return to open session afterwards. So can I have a motion to adjourn open session and return to close, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the board return to closed session for the aforementioned topics.
Thank you, Kevin. A second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. And Lana, could you please call the roll?
Neerman? Jogi? Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Thank you, Lana. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everyone. Been a longer meeting, but sometimes we have longer ones and sometimes shorter ones. So thank you, everyone, for your patience, and we'll see you next month.